Very good evening. Welcome to the Board of Trustees Special Meeting, January 24, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation. Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to bow your heads to me. Your honor, thank you for today. Thank you for giving us the snow and the great precipitation that we see out there. Pray for those who cannot be here tonight, pray for those that are here, and pray for those who protect our freedoms and our rights and the safety enjoyed in this country. Be with those families who are missing their loved ones as they are gone. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty, and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Trump.
Jeff Johnson.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Rosalind McKee.
Here.
All right, adoption of agenda. I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes. All right, public comments, a limited five minutes, and just state your name and address if you have any. And because this is a special meeting, it's got to pertain to the topics on the agenda. Going once, twice? Right, public comments closed. Old business, resolution accepting the mountain rates as determined by the Budget Commission. Let everybody have a chance to review this. And I will move to accept the mountain rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor as resolution 22-01-24-1. Is there a second?
Second.
Johnson, seconds. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes. All right, that passes. 2022 Permanent Appropriations. Everybody should have the revised permanent appropriations budget.
These have been revised since last meeting. There were things taken out of there that probably shouldn't have been in there for the meeting for last year and so forth. So, our total revenue resources, which is our revenue that's coming in, plus the getting amounts, we started with $7,46,720. That's what we got to work with, basically, 42. What we should take in, so forth. I budgeted, took some things out of there that probably I shouldn't have budgeted for anymore, and I added a few things in, had some more money into 1,000-110-190, which is salaries other at Enzoing, which is down 200,000. That's one of the places I had some. I have a little more in the capital projects, which is 1,00760, 730, improvement of sites and buildings. We have a little bit of those things in case we had a capital project we didn't do. I put some money in those too. And the total I came up with when I did it is $6,202,500.
Okay. I mean, I think that...
Does that help you?
Yeah. Well, I think having the extreme stuff, you know, the known extreme stuff taken out there, and I think once we have a fiscal officer, they can review, you know, that we need to revise it.
I suppose fairly confident this is a, this is a pretty accurate budget.
Okay, well...
Somebody else can make the changes all later, but I think this is good for this year, in my opinion.
Well, I will move with resolution 22-01-24-2, resolution to adopt permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, who's first?
Ros.
Rosalind, seconds. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
All right. We'll do that one. zoning assistant, I did not hear back from the prosecutor on that, so we'll delay that to our next meeting. Then fiscal officer interviews and appointment. At this time, actually, I would like to go into, skip to executive session, or C121-22G1 to consider the appointment of the fiscal officer for the remaining term. Is there a second? Or do we, do we call a second for going into?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Johnson, seconds. And that's just roll, right? No discussion on that?
We're gonna have discussions.
Is there discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
When we give the time.
And it is 6:36 PM.
And then what you're gonna wanna do, either, you're gonna wanna tell for the record who you're gonna be bringing in, even if it's one time, in the executive session. And we can note those after the fact, but you're gonna have the applicants in there. So you're supposed to, when you have people other than you three in the executive session...
So invite them there.
You're supposed to note it on the minutes who was in there.
We can invite them in now during...
Yeah, we can just do it afterwards if you want to. For the record, we're gonna wanna say who you had in the executive session.
Correct. We'll, we'll throw it in there and we'll...
We'll go to the fourth and side, and we'll copy one or two.
Yeah, we'll go in there and then we'll announce the, how the kids... Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
You're recording one?
Okay, you're back.
All right. I move to leave executive session, going to regular session. Is there a second?
Second.
Johnson, seconds. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
All right, we are at 8:46 PM, back in regular session. I thank everybody for being so patient.
And then for the record, can you read what we had in there?
Okay. For the record, we had invited into executive session Vanessa Neecamp.
If you wanna just put the applicant, the four applicants...
And the four applicants, Brian Hurd, Julie Varian, Lauren Davis, and where are we at? I know David Fulmer. Yes, David Fulmer. All right. So do I make a motion, then we discuss? Bear with me. So do I make a motion? Do I leave? And then, yeah, then we can discuss? I'm not sure. All right. I'll make a motion, resolution 22... That's not right. 22-01-24-03. Resolution to appoint Julie Varian to fiscal officer for the unexpired term of Walter Rogers. Do I have a second?
A second.
Ms. McKee, seconds. Discussion. I would just like to say I want to thank everybody that applied. And I'm not sure how, you know, we're gonna decide this, because this is my motion, but discussing. We're discussing, as I said, we're discussing. Like I said, everybody had a lot to bring to the role, and that would be my motion. Any discussion?
I made some very good, but thank you very much.
Ms. McKee, any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to thank everybody for coming out, interviewing. It was really, everybody had impressive resumes. I was very impressed with everyone's resume.
Definitely.
And thank you as well, Vanessa.
Yeah, thank you for your input in this. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
And it passed. I will, Ms. McKee, do you still want to address the administrator?
Yes.
Old business?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Onto old business, the administrator position. We'll just open it up for discussion. Ms. McKee?
Well, as you know, the prior trustee was acting as the administrator in Mark. You know, I'm a trustee as well now, and Mark yourself. But it's kind of hard to sit in a seat and try to do the administrative work as well as a trustee as we're in two acts. And there's a lot of responsibility, and that administrator role would actually help us move the township forward. And I think we should start looking to fill that role. I think we should also start looking to figure out between the three of us what we want as the administrator, what kind of role that you could see that person doing for the township. So I think we need to kind of start discussing the position description, what we need for that.
Okay. Did you, I mean, I think we started that last time. Did you go over any descriptions or any...
Well, I have several descriptions from different townships, but that's, and so we need to sit down and kind of decide between us trustees what we want, because there's so many different, there's a vast information from coming from different townships of what different roles. Like, I can give you an example. Down near Hamilton, they have a person that does the administrative work, but they also have a law director. So they're a bigger township, kind of similar to Violet Township. So I know we kind of talked about it, but we didn't sit down together and decide what those roles were. Because example, do we want a part-time? Do we want a full-time? Would we bring them in as a, just as a contractor? I mean, there's so many things that we can ask for in that administrative seat. Do we bring them in for a two-year contract? Do we bring them in as, you know, so there's a lot of questions that I have that I don't know, because I've never hired an administrator for a township. So I just think that because of the sunshine law, so we don't want to break, that we don't, you know, that administrator would act in our behalf, so we won't have to worry about that. So you had mentioned before that, you know, you are self-employed, and you're kind of pushing your work to the side so you can kind of fulfill the role as a trustee as well as some of the administrative work. We can't continue that role. We just can't do it. I can't do it. So my plans on, you know, is to try to get that seat filled as soon as possible.
Okay, and I agree with you. As I brought up last time, my personal opinion is we do need someone full-time. While we're not as big as Violet Township or Township, and so a lot of the ones that are home role and have law directors and that, we aren't growing. That's the thing, we're big enough where we need something, but small enough where we don't need, you know, or just someone dealing with massive employees and stuff like that. However, we do have a lot of opportunities with grants that we could direct them to. I do think the position would pay for itself. I think we're leaving money on the table if we don't have someone that's actively more for those, because even today I see the Lincoln County Commissioners have a special meeting tomorrow for additional park funds. And Etina Township has been out there. I'm not sure if we've applied previously, or if we haven't, if there's still time. If that's something the administrator can keep track of, but I mean, we can have a work session and kind of come together. But I would maybe suggest that each of us, working, I'm not sure where you're at with this, maybe look at what we think our needs are, and then come together, work session, kind of hammer it out, and go from there. You know, try to do as much due diligence outside so that we can discuss, and like I said, work session, work meeting, and go from there. But I do think that the longer we wait for the administrator, the more opportunity we're gonna miss.
And miss out.
In other areas, and like I said, my time, I do have a flexible schedule, but right now, I'm not working much at all, planning on that time to this. And I don't mind doing that, but I can't do that, you know, for four years. So, and there's a lot of other benefits. Do you have any questions or comments, or how we should proceed? Do you think we should, we should kind of...
Well, I think, I think we should just, I mean, you think you could have a list of job description things for my next meeting thing?
Okay.
We've got a few now. No, I mean, our list, what your, what your list, did you think?
What your?
I mean, because I don't, I don't have a list completed. I mean, I don't have it done. I have several I don't have, but, you know, I know what I'm looking for.
Okay.
And you leave, just compare them, and say, okay, we all three got one line? Okay, there's one line. You can, you can work through the little thing to go on from that, what we really don't need. And once we get your job description, then we can create out there so much money we want, and come to even get it.
I do have some job descriptions that I compared and worked on and kind of lined up some things.
So you've got a complete, what you think, Etina Township administrator job description?
I got, yeah, where I took from different townships and kind of put one together that I thought would work for us.
I think I have a good start.
Everybody agrees there is, that we can go over there. My preference would be, I do think we need someone full-time. If you don't work time, I think you're gonna limit yourself to a smaller pool of applicants to deal with it, for someone that's retired, or I don't think there's gonna be someone that's gonna continue with that position that long. And like I said, our needs of all the brands, I mean, we've got, we're grown, we've got the Jazz, we've got other, we've got the park, we've got, I mean, there's a lot that can be done.
Well, I want to say the, the big thing that comes into Lincoln County, we all know, the intel. Even though it's up in Jersey, but it's in Lincoln County, what's the impact of us here in Etna? So that's where I think, you know, there may be some things that's gonna happen that's gonna affect us. So that's why I think we need to really try to start moving forward and getting an administrator, you know, to see the full vision for Etna. So, yeah, I think that's, that's, that's something we need to be doing.
Well, I thought that's where we left off last time, a little bit of creating a job description and then going forward. So, do you want to try to put this on the next, if we're first meeting, to discuss further?
Absolutely. Yeah.
This was second?
There's all paper, and that way we can pass out to each other.
That'd be great.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. All right, close. I will move for a German.
Second.
Johnson, seconds. And notes, session on that. Roll call, please.
Rosalind McKee.
Yes.
Jeff Johnson.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes. And may disclose at 8:57 PM. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, by the way.
I have a 12, 12 and a half hour date.
Robert said that he needs you to talk to Robert too.
Baba does not...
We gotta sign off, so we got to...
Baba does not want me in the house.
I need to draw my sign, you guys go sign.
Checks? There's something there. If I give this to her, would you have a copy?
I should put this on the top.
Oh, yes.
So if you're, what is it, if you're on the Rogers website, and there's also a lot of on the trains that are listed, um, there's gonna be...
There's the PO.
Or maybe the PO's a little...
I don't remember. All right. The other one sees wait until we have another meeting.
Yeah, yeah, you do.
No, no, first I have to just, you mentioned conference, you have some, also, meeting conference, or some classes, or... Oh. There it will.
Yeah, we need somewhere.
We already applied, we already got a second call. And then the other thing, we wanted to get you, how about, people, insurance, so we, I'll have your, and we'll get the first start. The goal will be, except for first, you'll start, and we'll, and we should have that, that travel order. We can deal with that first. I'll reach out to, I'm still waiting to get back from a couple, because I can't do it, to do that, maybe have them apply, a first one. Well, that's one good way, but, and then I'll post on first, and then we can, okay, the next day, you know, maybe just come.
You don't want to take it, you don't want to give your resolution to, maybe three minutes, or sign the, 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 you know, the, the, the...
Okay, we need that, and we also, reflection, or, yeah, so.
That's actually all I have.
Is it?
Yep, there's a whole checklist.
This one, she's been just so helpful. I think a lot of artists turning the lights off to get some feedback.
No, I was trying to figure out which one.
The back one, we turn on the back.
For her, for, 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 for today, it's given a lot of...
And then all the...
That's what I'm talking about.
That one? Okay, here's the...
It's got a whole bunch of, of, of...
Yep.
Are you able to, tomorrow, deal with the OTA on the head of her basic performance effective 21?
You mean the retarder?
Retarder, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, retarder.
She's probably gonna have to do the same thing, and there are gonna be information.
Well, as an essential, and then application. We'll do that. You, you guys know, Laura Brown, that's secretary to the bureau, you just lost. So, okay, we're back to, you just turned the laptop, we just lost it now.
Well, Walter has... So, John has a good, yeah.
Does he, do we need it to...
No, no, he doesn't need it, but when it was just said they're not being used, I...
Do you need a laptop or not?
Okay. I'm always probably just everything here.
Oh, no, no, I don't, I don't really, I don't really, I think those were most, I think, two years later, he gets to make one of those, he provides it, that's really hard.
Really, so, which one's in there?
Walter always chose, but previous years, Walter chose everything, and so, bar, so how it on, there's gonna feel something, I mean, that when it comes up again, you can get desktops, or you can get laptops.
Yeah, so I have one, who helps.
He kept with the...
So for now, we need a very, that's, we use that.
Well, I don't know, they, the states provide the computers at the UAM. So he chose desktop. I don't know, I don't know if he could put the UAM on that.
And so she's like...
Because I know this one, the laptop.
And then when I had a part, she initially, I was towards, oh, I had a part.
Yeah, mine is one, I told you.
Or this is one?
Yeah, but, but UAM provides the equipment for it. They, they have always provided the equipment for the fiscal officer. She's, she's a desktop.
Yes.
I don't know how hard it would be to change that, I don't know. But the other fiscal officers took that PC home. They had a home, so they took, they took the, 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 the computer, the printer from the UAM home, and then they just, for instance, the, the records was, you know, it was payroll, was that they were...
So, right, they'll do some kitchen Saturday, but they don't pass out to the other days.
Yeah, because it all runs together. Yeah, it has to be their equipment to make it work through the UAM, like it's set up.
Listen, work with the states, it's all different.
Yeah, but I mean, it's really, I mean, it's really, you, you would have access to knowing that your own lead for CBI to leave in here. He would come in all the time from Sunday or Saturday when there was here, so it's quiet, you know. But yeah, if, if you're gonna want it home, you'll probably want to be able to set up a, because you're gonna need the whole PC and the printer. Now, when it comes to option again... So it's probably, and I don't know if we could swap it out, which we, this law...
We used to go, yeah, or, or...
Because I think you'd have a lot of, but I'm thinking you'd need that on for the last, we have the documents a lot. But I don't know how much you'd be able to at home, check to a printer, maybe, I mean, I don't know, you know, because it has to be that printer. But you have your stuff in, you know, you have, you know, you bring the chat. If they make a whole Hewlett-Patterson, a size, a Hewlett-Patterson, like, is a Hewlett-Patterson.
Well, yeah, we'll figure out, and then, so, yeah, I don't know. A high school kid. Yeah, maybe do it this week.
I know you're gonna have...
No, but we can get, no, but we can do the email, you can set it up, and you can get all that ready.
It's like I did, we were all, we're busy, just, I mean, you should take care of it all, you know, there's still this happening.
So, but especially with, I mean, I, 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 I can walk on people, but you bring it up first.
He's elected, especially, he's only twenty seven.
Our plan is find the travel order. You know, first, I'll propose to use the travel first, and I'll purr, and we'll prove it so the next day she'll have access to it.
But I believe he's, he told me that he would do all the bills for a dirty person, knowing that, you know, he's not... I believe he's, he told me that he would do all the bills for thirty persons, knowing that, you know, he's not. I believe.
I totally agree, you can use shopping.
I'm already, I'm up with all the students, car, and all that stuff.
We had to change how we do.
Well, lawyer bill's just done that, trustees, fiscal officers. You've been doing current, I've heard you guys are supposed to be on that fire.
They always. So Walter, Walter's basically. His salary isn't made on budget. Now, his doesn't change until March, because. She's talking about. Walter, I'm assuming he checked it out, I'm assuming he checked it out, that he, it's his terms. Well, I'm assuming he pays himself off.
See, that's my question. Does it check, is it by much care, not your child? Somebody at the auditorium's office, the proverb, I've got. And I can forward you on that. Those contacts and. So we'll be able to, yeah, because based on budget, it's never budgeted, so. Yeah, we listen, I don't know, because actually, I can. Professionals.
You're not considered a person, you're an elected official. No, honestly, you know the answer to that. You had a twenty.
You were sent to office, you're elected.
You're an elected official, you know, that you. You're like.
The moment we pointed you, what, what are requirements were, you know, so. No, but, no, no, she is actually, well. So she, she. Or we can't get an answer to the prosecution, she knows someone.
When you look at, you look at.
And which?
That's why.
Well, I know it's a different.
That's why I was.
It's a different.
Yeah, but I thought it was gonna be, that's why I was.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, we'll, our new fiscal officer will figure it out, but yeah, 'cause Vanessa, what we, she says, you never pay something for a person, so I'm just, yeah, your life, so, he received compensation for it.
His is an annual compensation.
Yeah, it's an annual, ours is.
So where he might have got confused, if he is wrong, is that he's annual, but see, he was probably thinking he's annual from a marshal.